is located at 6712 Hollywood Boulevard in Hollywood. For more information, go to AmericanCinematheque.com. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
The LA's Best After School Enrichment Program continues to grow and make its way into more schools. Rasha Goel has more.
For some elementary school students, their first day of school this year will be a memorable one. It's not every day students get a chance to have the mayor of Los Angeles read a story, shoot some hoops.
Skyhook.
Sing with them.
Happy Birthday to you!
We love you!
And share some exciting news about an after-school program called LA's Best.
Today, I'm very excited to announce that we're going to be expanding this program to five more schools this year.
Those five schools are Michelle Obama Elementary School, Sally Wright Elementary, Washington Primary Center School, South Region Elementary Number 10, and South Region Elementary Number 11.
Because when you go to LA's Best, guess what? You got a better chance of staying in school, a less chance of ever committing a crime, but none of us are ever gonna do that, right? And I know this program well because I've seen it firsthand.
We are so lucky in LA's Best to be able to be here for you, here for other schools, and almost 29,000 children throughout the city.
For 25 years, LA's Best has been providing after-school education, enrichment, and recreation programs for elementary school children ages 5 to 12. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
LA's Best will now be at 194 schools, serving students across the Los Angeles Unified School District. That's going to do it for this edition of LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Cindy San Luis. We want to remind you that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 20th. Mr. Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonn, Buscaino, Sidio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Carrasco, Correa, Labanze, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Fuentes moves, Weezer seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
O'Farrell moves, Labanze seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
If I could ask everyone in the council chambers to please rise for our flag salute, which will be led today by Mr. Price.
Right in over your hearts, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Clerk, why don't we begin by going through the agenda?
Very good, sir. Mr. President, there is a request to continue item 1 to this Friday, August 23. Again, item 1 to August 23.
Without objection.
Very good, sir. Items 2 through 7 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials members, specials. Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, let's go to the next section.
Items 8 through 18 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items 8, 9, 11, 13, 15, 16, and 18.
Okay, let's hold those items. Members, specials, specials members?
Yes.
Okay, let's, Mr. Englander.
Yeah, 11, I'd like to continue to Friday.
Okay, item 11 will be continued to this Friday. What date is that, Mr. Clerk?
That's August 23rd, sir.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Englander, it's my understanding that you have a presentation today. Are you ready?
Yes, Mr.
Okay, the floor will be yours.
Perfect, excellent, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Today, I'm happy to welcome Dr. Paula Thompson. Come on, here's, don't be shy. She's not shy. A kinesiologist, professor, California State University, Northridge. Dr. Thompson was recently named one of the top 20 female professors in California by statestats.org. That deserves a round of applause in and of itself, yes. Her resume is incredible, and what she's done, not only for the students, but in life, and what she has done in the arts and theater, what she has accomplished is really, too long of a list, quite frankly, would take the rest of this council meeting, and I think half of the degrees that I could read off in her studies and fields of study would require deep explanation to many on the council, including myself. But with that, Dr. Thompson has been a tenured faculty member at York University's Department of Theater and Graduate Studies since 1982, and is now ranked professor emeritus there. Prior to joining the Northridge faculty, she conducted research on creativity at the Juilliard School of Music, Stratford Festival, and Canadian Opera Company. Dr. Thompson has been a guest teacher at numerous international schools and theaters. She has trained extensively as a psychotherapist, and she is a California licensed clinical psychologist and a certified sports psychologist. A sports psychologist, we're gonna have to hear a lot more about exactly what that means. She has over 15 years of postdoctorate studies in neurobiology and traumatic and dissociative stress disorders. Collaboration with her peers, she's an active researcher in the field of psych psychology. And in addition to her academic achievements, she's a member of Given Hour, and this is really unique. Members, what she has done is really incredible. Her work pro bono, with, working with veterans in the field of psychology, and her work with the homeless throughout Los Angeles since 1997 is unprecedented. She's, yeah, that deserves applause, absolutely. Thank you, thank you, Ken. I'm getting applause from, from Ken Spiker. We gotta make sure we step it up a little bit here. And, but without further ado, we've brought her here today, and on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, our congratulations to Dr. Thompson on being named one of the top 20 female professors in California, and best wishes for her continued success. I'd like her to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Englander, and members of the Los Angeles City Council for this recognition. I am deeply honored and grateful. In truth, this recognition came as a surprise, since my entire professional career as an educator, psychologist, choreographer, dancer, and movement coach has been dedicated to quietly working with performing artists and patients. My personal life is no different. I met my husband, Maurice Godin, at the Stratford Shakespearean Festival, where we worked together on several productions. His career led him to LA to work in the film and television industry, and I followed. Perhaps a significant change to this pattern occurred when I was employed by California State University at Northridge. This is where my love for the arts converged with my scientific curiosity. Dr. Carol Oglesby, former chair of the Department of Kinesiology, and Dr. Shane Frelick, current chair of the department, offered support to develop a dance program at CSUN. Dr. Victoria Jacques, my research colleague, guided me into the world of scientific research. Together, we tackle the questions of stress and resilience, in particular, how do performing artists, athletes, and individuals with functional disorders handle stress, both psychologically and physiologically. As I ventured into this field, I fervently believed that performing artists were resilient and yet sensitive. The scientific evidence so far points to this belief. Performing artists do endorse greater optimal flow, and they have more emotional and attentional flexibility. However, they are also more vulnerable to anxiety, shame, dissociation, unresolved mourning, and symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder.
It's much like the city council.
Oh, it is? So, these results suggest that they need more support as they share their incredible talents. Gregory Peck stated, "Actors are courageous." Aristotle suggested that artists should be emotionally affected, but not at the risk of becoming unbalanced. To quote Shakespeare, "Performing artists hold as twir the mirror up to nature." And in our research studies, we hope to hold a mirror up to the nature of creativity and resilience. Dr. Diane Harrison, our current president at California State University at Northridge states, "See sun shines." The students and faculty are hardworking, passionate, and fundamentally curious. They tend to strive for excellence without entitlement, and they generally work with profound gratitude and humility. It is a joy to create dances and to conduct scientific research at CSUN. A brief DVD was prepared to show you some of the ways that we are researching the psychophysiological effects of stress on performing artists, athletes, and patients who are suffering functional disorders. Unfortunately, we're not able to show that at this time, but I'm happy to provide that if any of you are interested. I'd like to call on Dr. Oglesby for closing remarks, and once again, thank you for this incredible honor.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to say a word or two on behalf of our department. We're so proud of Paula and appreciative of the council and Councilwoman Englander for this recognition. When, I was fortunate to be the chair when Paula was hired, and I think we had an expectation, a reasonable expectation, that we were going to be bringing in someone who would support dance performance at least once a semester. There would be a great performance. Well, we not only got that great performance from her dance company, which is fantastic, but we also have the scientist and publishing academic, as was mentioned. And additional to that, we have an extensive program for every student who wishes to take a dance class at Northridge, and hundreds of students every semester do that. And the over and above that no one ever expected is that Paula, with Maurice's assistance as well, staged a concert every semester, a concert experience for the students who are simply taking dance classes at Northridge, sometimes for the first time. So, we got a tremendous bargain, about four, or five, or 10 for one, when Paula Thompson was hired at Northridge, and thank you for recognizing her so reasonably and appropriately.
Great, thank you very much.
Great, members, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. President, before you get away, Coach, what's so special, no one can take that away from you. You deserve it. There's nothing like a coach in music, art, dance, the whole thing. A dear friend of mine, Annette Cordona, was on your faculty out there, who was the best dancer from St. Bernadette. She went to Marshall High School, she was an actress. You remember her from Grease, but cancer got her, and I always mention her name when there's any association. But you make a difference in what you do, because it's so important, and we wish we could support more of the arts, theater arts, the Ford Theater, and the Coinga Pass welcomes dance. We should have a special program for Northridge. Let's work on that, Mitch. Congratulations, Coach, for a great job. Thank you very much.
Mitchell, are you gonna be long, because I was hoping you'd come take the chair? Mr. Weezer, for a very important announcement.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, if I could take a point of personal privilege, I have a gift here for Councilmember Buscaino, given that he started the campaign to collect socks for the Midnight Mission on Skid Row. I got 217 socks.
Oh, see.
From Paula's department in downtown Los Angeles. Once they saw this on television on Channel 35, they donated 217 socks for this drive, so congratulations and thank you. And now, because of yours and Council President Wesson's drive, people on Skid Row will have some clothes and some support from the city council. Congratulations, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Buscaino, I love it.
See that?
I mean, here's a member who has beat me by, what, 77 pair of socks or something like that. Now, let's hope somebody comes in and gives more than Mr. Weezer, because people, you know, we had some fun with our weird and crazy sock day, but people never focused on the real cause, which is to furnish socks to the homeless, which is of a big need. So, Mr. Buscaino, I really appreciate what you've done. Jose, this is great, and I would love to come to work every day and see another couple hundred pair of socks.
And I brought some socks for Buscaino, too, to wear. These are some nice colorful socks for you, Joe.
Mr. Sidio said maybe we should name the company that participated.
Yeah, this is Fallas, in downtown Los Angeles. They have stores throughout the county of Los Angeles, and this particular store is on Broadway. Next.
We got a week and a half left. Week and a half.
Okay, what do we, what do we have, Mr. Buscaino?
Nine days left remaining for this sock drive.
Okay, well, let's maybe try to...
And I believe Mr. Weezer is in the lead, sir.
Yes, he is. Let's push this for these nine days. What we're gonna do is, Mr. Clerk, why don't we vote to reconsider? We're not reconsidering item... Okay, on item 8, we have cards from John Walsh, and I have a blank card. So, did anybody fill out a card for item 8 but neglected to put their name? You, Mr. Herman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Walsh? Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns, uh, Jordan Downs. Now, uh, they're doing a great job in Jordan Downs. I remember when Jordan Downs was a crime magnet. And I don't know if you've seen the latest statistics, which you have never mentioned here. We're down to about 10 or 15% of the black youth crime that we had 20 years ago. It's about 90% gone, and the racists don't want to point it out. And one of the reasons the racists, and you folks here, I don't know why you don't bring the, the facts up, it's on the internet. You, it's because places like Jordan Downs is clean, and all that a lot of white people want to say is that black kids are attacking them. It's not happening anymore. That's when Bradley was mayor. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Herman.
Councilmembers and new members of this staff, Mr. Sadio, welcome and congratulations on those who participated now a part of our council. But the issue here that Mr. Walsh is talking about, and I'll keep it very brief, is this. Time in and time out, we hear about projects that never get completed. We run out of funds, similar to the massive rail system coming from San Francisco here. But I'll stay on topic. I'm gonna reserve my time for further public comment. Thank you.
Mr. Herman, come back up, please. You've got another card on nine. I'm gonna have you speak back to back to back on all your items, since you've got several cards out, so go ahead. If you wish to...
We found my other card now?
Absolutely. So, item nine.
Okay. But it doesn't note, out of respect, many constituents have their cards lost or misplaced. I'm pretty sure I know how to put my name on my card. But in the future, can we have our cards?
Um, if you could speak on item nine, please. On item nine, and your time is going.
Now, based on what the controller and the city attorney of this ordinance will do, depends on trans, um, transparency. Transparency to say that we don't have to ask the federal government or the state to help us finish and complete the fundings for these type of projects. So, let's keep that in mind. Thank you.
Now on item 13. Go ahead.
Really?
Yeah, why not? You're already there.
Really, really?
So, your clock's ticking. Really, really?
We got Zuma Dog in the house. All right, let's get serious here now. 13. Wow, you guys caught me off guard. Amazing, the first time in public comment history. The gadflies are back. Future public hearings date August 27th, 2013. Hearing appeals against the annual assessment for maintenance on sidewalks. I have grossly spoken about the conditions of our sidewalks, the defiance of DOD to get these sidewalks improved due to the infrastructure that they have created. Safety issues. So, let me extend this thought. Are we within ground rules to make our sidewalks safe? And if so, who's gonna take the responsibility and accountability to ensure that this future public hearing on the Westwood Village sidewalks of maintenance will be conducted by and through the city of Los Angeles for the safety of all its constituents? Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. John Walsh. John, we've got you on items nine, 13, 15, and 18. We'll go ahead and take them all together for you as well. You've got four minutes remaining for all items.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Stay tuned, Zuma Dog is here. Stay tuned. Okay, on item nine, this concerns interest. The interest is piling up, but don't worry, bonded indebtedness will be wiped out when the fools out there, and you're not fools, vote for the multi-billion dollar sidewalk repair. Vote against the sidewalk repair.
If you could stick on the actual item, it's item nine, and this is on bonded indebtedness.
It's on bonded indebtedness.
Or you can, you can jump to any of your items if you so choose as well.
Okay, no more heckling. The judge ruled, uh, no more heckling. Okay, uh, number 13. Otherwise, the meetings are boring unless they heckle. Uh, number 13, this concerns, again, sidewalks for Westwood Village. I remember when Westwood Village was crowded, then a Japanese tourist was murdered there. Now it's a ghost town. Number 13. And, uh, the last ones are number 15. Okay, this concerns the reconstruction of the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Now, I remember when I came here, first saw it, in 1966, when I lived here for the first time, you could eat off the Hollywood Walk of Fame. It was beautiful. It started at Hollywood and Highland. The first stars, there's only one star alive from the first set of stars, and that's Joanne Woodward. She's the only one alive. Go to Jay Walsh Confidential. It is now befouled. It's filthy. You don't clean it. There's dog doo-doo. It's torn up. Uh, the Metro Rail caused all sorts of subsidence. It is a mess. And the historic trust, which is another word for the Chamber of Commerce, has done almost nothing. It is a national disgrace, and this, and we have to clean it up, and we have to get rid of the people on the state historic trust. I challenge anybody out there to get on the sidewalk, and you won't be able to walk more than 50 feet before you see a damaged star. In fact, I saw a whole bunch of people in front of a star the other day, entire family, and I walked over with Shirley Jones. They were taking pictures, they were happy. I said, honest to God, I said, you must be big Shirley Jones fans. And the lady said to me, well, actually, we like her, but my name is Shirley Jones, and so is my daughter and granddaughter. The only people that are taking pictures out there now of stars are people who have the same names as the stars. And, uh, just, uh, to finish off, uh, you are racing the CRA representative. We want to get rid of all traces of the CRA. We live in a great world. We live in a post-CRA world. All they did was divert money. Money now is coming back to this city. You won't believe what I put up there yesterday. HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh Confidential.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, we're gonna go ahead and go to item 16 for cards.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Councilmember, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank the council for considering the Kwanzaa and the funding of other inner-city opportunities, programs, and projects. I'm thinking that this is like a life source. Anytime you get the, the, the Heritage Month for the African-American, it's like a resource tool for our, our youth, our young adults and our kids. What we try to do in our particular communities surrounding the 8th and the 9th District, and we try to instill such items as Black Heritage Month and Black Empowerment. We would like to refer to it as African-American empowerment. And we thank the city council for providing the necessary funds that it takes to facilitate and continue anything that allow the constituents within my particular area to grow as individuals and to always be reminded of the important things. Since the 1612, when they founded Jamestown, a lot of the African-American, uh, programs and projects were not even in existence. Now, it's like three, 200 years later, and we are here speaking about Kwanzaa. The seriousness of such an event, Kwanzaa, and the Heritage Month celebration and this funding, is that you'd be surprised of the constituents in and around my community who don't have the necessary knowledge to know about their African-American heritage and the importance of their African-American heritage, and how through these particular groups, how people are empowered just by the small things that the city council do. I'm here really speaking about the 8th and the 9th District, and we just truly, we thank the council for doing all that they do for our particular community. We really thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. No, thank you very much. And, uh, we've got one more card on item 19. In the House, Zuma Dog. The mic is yours.
We'll pass on that for right now.
And, okay, we'll go ahead and speak. We have no other items on 19, uh, no other public comment cards, so that'll close the public comment on all items before us. I believe those are all cards except for general public comment. So, uh, Mr. Clerk, what does that take us?
Mr. President, we should first vote on the matters remaining before you.
Okay, well, go ahead, if, unless any colleagues have, if you can read off the list of those numbers, so...
Those would be the following items, counsel. Eight, nine, 13, 15, 16, and 18.
I think no speakers on the queue. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you very much. And, uh, fourth with on eight without objection, per Mr. Buscaino. And where does that take us?
President, that takes us to, uh, item 19, which is scheduled for closed session, or general public comment.
We'll go ahead and take general public comment. Zuma Dog on general public comment.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, everybody. As you know, some of you, I've been coming here since 2000, in 2006, I started coming here to these council meetings to protest about the Venice Beach ordinance 4215. And during the course of my public comments here, I was interrupted by council. I was interrupted, ejected, banned, and called off topic for things, and you told everybody in the city that I was bad. You're wrong, Zuma Dog. You're loud. You're not allowed to talk that way. You're, you're saying it wrong. You can't do this. You can't do that. You banned me for 30 times, for 30 meetings at a time. Okay, so a federal judge ruled on August 7th, 2013, and you could read the complete ruling at LaCityNews.com. LaCityNews.com. Now, what I came down here for is to let everybody know on the record that a new era has arrived in Los Angeles regarding free speech. We will have free speech for the first time ever here in Los Angeles, because here's what the judge said, and I'm gonna read. This is, "The court finds that the discussion of a council member's alleged criminal activities is relevant to a discussion of funding that the city intends to give that council member's district. Indeed, this incident is exemplary of why it's unconstitutional to restrict speakers from making personal attacks in city council meetings. It chills speech critical of elected officials, which is speech at the heart of the First Amendment. In one of the largest cities in the world, it's expected that some inhabitants will sometimes use language that does not conform to the conventions of civility and decorum. Language and swear words, for example. As an elected official, a city council member will be subject to personal attacks in such language. It's asking a lot to endure, but that's what the First Amendment calls for. While the city has a right to keep the meetings moving in the code of conduct, it cannot sacrifice free speech. A dog may be a gadfly, contrary to your beliefs, but the First Amendment..." Anyway, it says that you gotta endure a hell of a lot, and I do. Final question, final sentence...
Okay, that's your time, though. So, you can come back anytime, but welcome back to the chambers. Thank you. Okay, next speaker. Sid, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning, council. Good morning, council members. Uh, as you're aware of this morning, uh, they've passed around the pamphlets that I prepared for every council member. It's regarding the historic Court San Vincent. As a matter of fact, uh, I'm being, I'm very tired of coming back and speaking in front of you. This is my seventh or eighth time. There is an emergency situation. I don't know if the council members are taking this very seriously. The issue at hand is that there is an ADA problem in that vicinity. Either this particular item has to be agendized by one or more council members, so you could all understand how we need to bring this to a resolution. Because when the directive was given, even though Mr. Weezer's office means well, and they're working diligently to bring a resolution to this matter, it needs the full attention of the council members, because there are some things that we just cannot, uh, look aside, especially when there's a directive to the street services to ticket these individual shop owners. It's basically a cat and mouse game. This has to stop. So, the day that one of you, consciously, by reading this pamphlet, which is about 11 pages with the documentation, pictures, and a three-page letter from me to you all, please, someone, for the sake of those 11 merchants, agenda is this item so we can discuss it openly and somehow bring a resolution so we can save those businesses. Tomorrow, a part of this, uh, item, it's gonna be heard at the Public Works meeting, headed by Mr. Buscaino, which there is a motion, uh, which will be presented, hopefully by, uh, the Public Works, which is 13-0658. I just hope you council members fight it in your heart to talk to one another and bring this to a faster resolution, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Craig Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. This is pertaining to the Harvard Park, the District 8th and 9th, the 8th and the 9th District, and it's geared around family, government, economy, education. Speaking about those things being life sources to our community, I would like for the, the city council to be mindful of the small business community in and around the 8th and the 9th District. We need to improve those, those particular areas, because right there at, uh, 59th, between Normandy, right off of Slauson, it's a great area. The only thing that we're in need of is, is like the beautification of the attraction to attract, um, constituents or to allow them to come out and to like socialize within the community. We have a lot of dirt and trash and other, like, stuff like buildup on the, on the sidewalks, and it's really, uh, nasty. We have, uh, other things that we can address, like our alleyways between the 8th and the 9th District. They're only divided by the street, by the yellow tape right off of Normandy. And on the, on the Benari Park side, there's a lot of trash in the alleys. And on the 9th District, Mr. Karen Price's side, there's a lot of trash in the alleys. But the small business community, we're trying to develop our community. We're trying to provide a sense of hope for the youth in the community, and we're hoping that the city council don't lose sight that we are a people within the community. We're in a high-crime neighbor, uh, community neighborhood, and we're just hoping that the city council don't forget that we do have inner-city organizations and programs and projects that seriously need your funding. And, and Mr. Price and Mr. Benari Parks, uh, they know about the events that have transpired. We're just hoping that the city council don't forget about us in the 8th and the 9th District, because we do need like a sense of revitalization. The small business community is suffering because of the excess trash and the buildups in the alley. We need to like clean those things up and like spray the streets off a little bit. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. Rebecca, Beatty, Beatty? Good morning.
Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Rebecca Beatty. I am a registered voter, a resident of the San Fernando Valley, and a DWP ratepayer. I've also worked in the public sector in LA for almost 30 years. I'm nothing against the DWP or the IBW. However, the current proposed contract that is under discussion has been under discussion for over a year. Given that some outrageous practices at the DWP have been uncovered within the last few weeks, it seems prudent that the city council resolve these issues before jumping into a new contract. Unlimited sick pay is bad policy, and it's very costly. In an era, era of shrinking budgets and rising costs, the fact that DWP employees don't pay a penny toward their health care is unacceptable. Mayor Garcetti was elected on an agenda of job creation, back-to-basics governance, and reform of the DB, DWP. I'm asking our city council members, especially those of you who were supported by the IBW... I'm asking our city council members, especially those of you who were supported by the IBW during recent elections, to act with courage and to put this matter on hold for 60 to 90 days as you pursue an equitable agreement with the DWP. Eliminating bad and expensive work rules should be a priority, that's not something that is on your to-do list over the next four years. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. John Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman, followed by Mervyn Evans.
John Walsh blogging at J. Walsh Confidential. Maybe I should just go through a little bit about the posts I have up here right now. First one, Italian tourist Alice Scupione's blood still stains the Venice boardwalk while you celebrate crazy socks. And I would like to thank Mr. Kern Price. He wouldn't put it on his foot. He used it as a mitten. And Ms. Martinez didn't involve herself. She wore stockings. And of course, Labange didn't show up. That was very smart. Next up blog has to do with Idi Amin. I am tired of bloggers comparing Herb Wesson to Idi Amin. I didn't know Idi Amin personally. I spent a good deal of my time in 1967 in Uganda. He was a freedom fighter. He was a patriot. He fought British imperialism. And to drag him into the mud by comparing Idi Amin to Herb Wesson is a great disservice to every black person who loves Idi Amin. Stop comparing him. Next one is the newly-formed Autumn for Assembly, anybody but Autumn. And I don't know, you haven't heard about this yet. It's on our website. Yvonne Brethwaite Burke has brought her daughter in from somewhere else, and she's running her for Assembly. Her daughter's 40 years old and has never been in politics. And all you plantation people in Bradford's district, you're supposed to vote for Yvonne Brethwaite Burke, who thinks she's white, who thinks she's white, and her daughter is even whiter than she is. And she's attacking all the black candidates in that district. That's another good story. And of course, anybody who gets screwed in the butt by Jose Weezer deserves every penny they get from the city. He's screwing anything that's not screwed down.
Thank you.
HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Herman.
This is not a laughing matter. It's not. Take all necessary action to maintain uninterrupted services to this community, to your community. Carry out a mission of fundamental management, not misconduct. Misconduct, to me, is a threat. Sexual harassment must stop here and now. Why? Duty of the agency, misuse of city position or resources. There is a distinction between what he says and what he does not say. Restraining orders to whoever the perpetrator is should be enforced. By whom? By the city attorney's office, on behalf of its public. Because the public has the presence and the attention of what's going on here. Philner, Weiner, who's next? Mr. Weezer? Yes. Please, thank you. Sexual harassment, misconduct, is a risk. And a risk of sexual harassment here is not going to be tolerated at any level, local level or in Sacramento. So Dion, wherever you may be, city attorney, build a case on behalf of the public. Save our funding for better resources and services that I, you, we have been denied in services not just for disability, but services towards the public. So with this petition, this city ordinance, I make our defense. Sabotage from a public official will not be tolerated.
Great, thank you very much. Barry Johnson.
Thank you.
Oh, Mervyn, yeah.
I thought you said Merv Evans.
Merv Evans as well, yes. In either order.
Mr. Englander.
Good morning.
You look pretty good in that chair.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I hope you get it sometime.
I'm in it now.
I have a letter that I've submitted to council that's addressed to the governor that calls for parole to military service. We have far too many individuals who are incarcerated in this state, and we need to convert that dead capital to positive human capital. National Guard service in this state is vital to the security of this state, and it's vital to the security of this country. Providing young people who have made a mistake in their life, an opportunity to redeem their citizenship, to get their life on the right track. Military service for minorities has always been a gateway to success. Yes, there's tremendous amount of work to do in Afghanistan still. We have to clear the landmines, not of the opposing side, but American landmines before we leave. There's a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done, vital, important work. The National Guard provides vital services. It keeps you free. Now, I want to quickly remind everyone out there that it's time to start voting. And I want to encourage you to get your copy and closely read your county guide and read your candidate statement if you're out in the valley looking for a replacement for Assemblyman Bloomfield, or if you're here in Los Angeles looking for a replacement for Mr. Price. Now, I know of at least one good candidate for replacing Mr. Price, and I think he's a wonderful fellow. He's tall, dark, handsome, and has a great personality. He's just a wonderful guy. But I'm not here to tell you who to vote for, but I am here to tell you, take your responsibility for voting and live up to it. Live up to your democratic goals, and be sure to read the candidate statement in the book. In fact, it's only one candidate statement, mine. Thank you.
Great, no, thank you very much. All right, Barry, now you're up, followed by Don, it's like Garza, but it's all crossed off, and Richard Robinson.
Barry Johnson, Studio City stakeholder. I took off from work today without getting paid to be here for item number one, which was continued. If there was ever a city where one size doesn't fit all, it's Los Angeles. While I respect and have nothing against those single-family neighborhoods who choose murals, I ask for the same respect in reverse for those single-family neighborhoods who currently don't have single-family murals and wish to continue that tradition. In option, I believe option A will open up a can of worms for those communities who wish to continue not having murals in their single-family neighborhoods. While waiting for an opt-out, we are left to chance as to what will happen during the interim. In option B, thanks to Councilmember Englander, that now allows single-family communities to opt-in. Opting in will surely be easier than opting out. For mural artists who have been waiting to paint murals for 10 years, you still will immediately be able to paint in all other zoning areas except R1s, and that's a whole lot of area until your communities opt-in. I urge the council to go for opting in. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Don, you're up, followed by Richard Robinson, our final speaker.
Just to let you guys know off the bat, I have been in fashion by, everything I'm wearing is from Fallas Paleros on 5th and Broadway. Thank you, Fallas and Jose Weezer for all the wonderful socks going to the Midnight Mission, and all of you guys that are providing the clothing for the Midnight Mission. I love the Midnight Mission. Okay, folks, this is a beautiful day today. We had a wonderful ceremony in front of, at the Sister City sign. We got to tell St. Petersburg that we love them, and we're going to stand with them, our sister city. We're going to stand with Russia. We're going to stand with all the people who are oppressed around the world, and like Tom Labange has said, we love you. On another note, the Gil Cedeo report. Again, I suffered, walked for many months, so of course I will update you on Gil Cedeo. He is keeping his word, folks. Affordable housing going up in Highland Park. Affordable housing, we have a crisis. The man's fighting. The man got his SB2. He's not just making all the other municipalities create affordable housing. We actually got to battle them now for funding for permanent supportive housing, which is a good thing, which is a good thing. So I'm grateful for this new wonderful city council. I'm grateful for now that we have a woman on the city council now, because I know as long as we have a woman on city council, things will actually get done. And I'm just glad we got this city council here. I'm glad for Mr. Buscayno from San Pedro. I'm glad for Mike Bonin. I'm glad for all of y'all. So I got to say, more clothes for everybody. Kern Price, proud that you're representing the night. Too bad we couldn't have you in Skid Row. We still love Jose Weezer. We got everybody. Paul Corretts, love you too. Mitchell Farrell, ring the bell for freedom.
Great, thank you very much. Richard, come on up. Good morning.
Morning. Honorable President and members, Richard Robinson, COT, Community Outreach Program. I'm a neighborhood organizer. I'd like to take issue with what Mr. Walsh has stated. What we see is not a natural disaster in Hollywood. Most of humankind's problems are caused by whom? Human beings. So we exert the human effort necessary, and we what? Repair the nation's infrastructure? Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. That concludes public comment. And I believe it moves us over to the special one. We have a special agenda, item one. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Special one is before us. I believe the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the Rule 23 findings. Subsequent to the issuance of today's agenda, on Saturday, August 17th, LAPD responded to a call that shots were fired at 4601 Berryman Avenue. When they arrived at the scene, they located the victim, Francisco Javier Ayala, in his car with multiple gunshot wounds. The Los Angeles Fire Department and paramedics responded and pronounced the victim dead at the scene. The victim had no known gang affiliations, and there is no apparent motive for the crime. As of yesterday afternoon, all available leads have dried up, and LAPD, in consultation and conjunction with the council office, determined that a reward should immediately be approved in order to track down the culprit and protect the community. Council must make findings pursuant to government code section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Great, thank you very much. And Mr. Bonin?
Colleagues, I'd ask that we make the findings, so we consider the matter today.
Okay, well, go ahead and open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thank you.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Colleagues, the city attorney spoke a bit to the merits of this issue as well. Last Saturday night, a young man from Del Rey in CD 11 was shot and killed outside his home on Berryman Avenue, suffered about seven shots. LAPD needs our assistance in posting a reward motion so they can help find the killer, who is still at large. The family was unable to be here today for this, but will be here sometime the next week. I'd ask that we vote today to issue the reward notice.
Great, thank you very much. Without any further ado, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and send that forthwith as well. With that, item nine, also forthwith without objection, per the city attorney. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn, or, I'm sorry, we'll go ahead and take the next item 19 in closed session. The closed session, we've taken public comment on it already, so we'll go ahead and empty council chambers, I believe.
And I will be recusing on this matter.
Yes, it'll be one recusal. I believe that there are no staff, no, no staff at all, only principals. So we're going to ask everybody if we can clear council chambers, sergeant-at-arms, and only have principals, all council members only, and no staff. Chambers will be cleared. We'll give it a few minutes. We'll go ahead and adjourn into closed session.
Every year, thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves. But together, we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play.
In a safe haven like Hollenbeck Palace.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here, to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
5859 KF5060 Watch 3.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10pm until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violent traffic accidents and we have to do good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You'll be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian acts something like an event such as parole beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community. The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
It just takes one cup.
Every year, thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play, and a safe haven like Hollenbeck Palace.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violent traffic accidents and we have to know good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Pearl Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity, accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
It just takes one cup.
Every year, thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves. But together, we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play, and a safe haven like Hollenbeck Pal.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.
...
Thank you very much. We're back in session now. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? Members, any adjourned motions? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good afternoon. Continue to serve the city well.